Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for October 28th, 2014. Before we begin, I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Spataro to lead us in a brief prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Mayor?
Dear God, please bless our deliberations today as we endeavor to do what's in the best interests of the people of the City of Muskegon and the people who reside in the larger Muskegon community. Let us treat each other with respect and courtesy and understand only you have the right answers. We need to listen to each other. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Renzema-Sipiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome and say hello to my favorite Babicas in the entire world, the Sanaki children, who brought their grandfather along tonight, Commissioner Ken Mahoney. Welcome, Commissioner. And all my friends from the... May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary of request: To approve minutes of the October 13th Commission Work Session Meeting and the October 14th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Sodium hypochlorite storage tank number two repairs, public works. Summary of requests: Authorized staff to enter into an agreement with Tri-Color Inc. for fiberglass repairs for sodium hypochlorite storage tank number two. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends acceptance of bid from Tri-Color Inc. for $8,750. Amendment to the zoning ordinance, planning economic development. Summary of requests: Staff initiated request to amend the zoning ordinance to allow medical marijuana dispensaries in B2 convenience and comparison business, B3 central business, B4 general business, B5 governmental business, MC medical care, I1 light industrial, and I2 general industrial districts. Staff recommendation: To approve the zoning ordinance amendments. Committee recommendation: The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request at their October 16th meeting. Consulting services with Michigan Municipal League, affirmative action. Summary of requests: Approval to utilize the Michigan Municipal League's consulting services in the development of comprehensive job descriptions for city staff positions. The scope of the work included in the packet outlines the process the League will undergo to perform the updates to all the currently budgeted job descriptions. Many of the job descriptions at the city have not been updated since the late 1980s to the mid 1990s. We have recognized difficulties with attempt to recruit employees utilizing outdated industry language, and the updates are needed across the board for all position descriptions. The descriptions will comprise all the necessary elements utilizing ADA compliant language for inclusion in each job description. The project would begin in January 2015 and would be completed within three months. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends and requests approval to utilize the Michigan Municipal League's consulting services in the development of comprehensive position descriptions for city staff and amend the 2014-2015 fiscal year budget to include the expense under civil service and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Ground lease and option to purchase for NIMs, a neighborhood park playground, planning economic development. Summary of requests: On March 5th, 2014, the City Commission approved the participation agreement with NIMs Neighborhood, Muskegon Public Schools, and the City of Muskegon for the NIMs Neighborhood Park Playground. After several months of planning, fundraising, grant writing, and negotiations, NIMs Neighborhood and city staff have agreed on the ground lease and option to purchase for the property at the corner of Southern and Davis. The NIMs Neighborhood president has signed the document. The neighborhood has raised over $25,000 for playground equipment, which is expected to be ordered early next year and installed in the spring of 2015. The neighborhood continues to fundraise and write grants for additional improvements in the future. Staff recommendation: To approve the ground lease and option to purchase and authorize the Vice Mayor and City Clerk's signatures and to authorize the purchase of the designated property legal description in the lease agreement by the City of Muskegon staff from Muskegon Public Schools. Marketing and image, City Manager. Summary of requests: At its annual goal-setting meeting, the City Commissioners listed improving the city's image as a top priority. Staff has been working on image-related activities, including signage, marketing strategies, and partnering with other agencies on this endeavor. The city currently does not have funds budgeted for marketing and image and is requesting that $20,000 be added to the public relations budget to fund marketing and image-related activities. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends approval. Community Relations Committee recommendation for reinstatement of the Equal Opportunity Committee, City Clerk. Summary of requests: To concur with a recommendation from the Community Relations Committee regarding the reinstatement of the Equal Opportunity Committee. Staff recommendation: Approval. Committee recommendation: Approve the recommendation of the Community Relations Committee for the reinstatement of the Equal Opportunity Committee.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda is presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor?
D, Delta, E, Echo. D and E.
D and E. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
D, Delta.
Okay, D, Delta.
E, Echo.
F?
As in Frank.
F as in Frank, so... So, D, E, and F. Get a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
I would approve the consent agenda as read minus items. D, Delta, E as in Echo.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German to approve the consent agenda, minus items D, E, and F, which I am deaf without my hearing aids. So, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Renzema-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, item D?
Yes, I would move that we approve to utilize the Michigan Municipal League's consulting services in the development of comprehensive position descriptions for city staff and amend the 2014-2015 fiscal year budget to include the expense under civil service and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Second?
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Renzema-Savinga, to approve the and utilize the Michigan Municipal League's consulting services in the development of comprehensive position descriptions for city staff and amend the 2014-2015 fiscal year budget to include the expense under civil service and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Vice Mayor, as you open?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the civil service was on board with this because ultimately they had the final say on the descriptions. The material seems to indicate that, but, you know, I don't want to go down this road and then find out the civil service says, "Oh, well, we're not interested."
Yeah, we actually have had a number of conversations with Deb and the Civil Service group about the need to update a number of the, I guess, a number of the descriptions. So, my indication is yes. Have we had a formal recommendation from them to do this? No, we have not. But we have had discussions with them and we feel that they are in favor of getting all these positions updated. And actually, they've helped us, the county's helped us update a couple of them as we've made hires recently and realized that they were just, that they were just inadequate and they didn't fit the need for the hire that we were, that we were undertaking.
Thank you.
Commissioner, as you seconded, did you have any comment?
No.
Okay, very good. Anything else from the Commission? Not roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renzema-Sipiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, item E?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the ground lease and option to purchase and authorize the Vice Mayor and City Clerk's signatures and to authorize the purchase of the designated property by the City of Muskegon staff from the Muskegon Public Schools.
Second?
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the ground lease and option to purchase and authorize the Vice Mayor and City Clerk's signatures and authorize the purchase of the designated property by the City of Muskegon staff from Muskegon Public Schools. Vice Mayor?
Well, I didn't have any questions, but the group that's interested in creating what hopefully will be a playground for the NIMs Neighborhood are here, and I wanted to give them an opportunity to share with us and the folks at home the nature of the project.
Very good. And before we invite the representatives up, I would like to disclose that I am a former board member and president of the NIMs Neighborhood Association, current member, but I have no conflict. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, good. And is there anybody else here? Commissioner Johnson?
And I'm a current board member, serving as treasurer of the NIMs Neighborhood Association. And given my work with the Neighborhood Association on this project, while I have no conflict, I'm choosing to recuse myself just to make sure there's no doubts about the propriety of my involvement on this vote. So, I'll recuse myself at this time. Thank you.
I trust you. And who wanted to speak for the association? Jen Sanaki, please come forward. Give your name and your address and have at it.
I need a ladder here. My name is Jen Sanaki, 1417 Lake Shore Drive, and I just wanted to say thanks to, I have a list of people I need to thank, but a little background on the project. A couple of years ago, when NIMs closed, they took our playground away and made our neighborhood the only playground in the city without, or the only neighborhood in the city without a playground. So, that's where I came in. I started this going on two and a half years ago. So, we're finally there. We will be breaking ground in the spring because we have grant money that we got to use by June 30th, so we'll have a playground by the summer. So, and here's a list of people I need to thank. First of all, somebody needs to tell Kathy. There you are. I want to, I want to thank her for allowing me to be her albatross for about two and a half years now. We've come a long way from our first meeting, and this certainly wouldn't be happening without your assistance. And secondly, Frank, for listening to our concerns and getting this moving on a little bit of a faster track, so we're here tonight. I'd like to thank Mr. Felsky and Muskegon Public Schools for the donation of the piece of property that we're going to use. Also, Anita Bailey and CNS for the grant that we received from them to make this possible, along with the community foundation money that we, that we applied for and received. And certainly, my fellow board members of NIMs Neighborhood Association for even entertaining this idea and making this a goal and a priority for our, our favorite neighborhood. My husband for listening to me spit and sputter and plan this for, like I said, going on two and a half years and encouraging me to get it done. And finally, those three kids. Without them as my inspiration, this would not be happening. So, we are super excited to start this in the spring, and we can't wait for you guys to come and see it. So, thank you again for approving this. This is awesome.
Thank you, Jen, for bringing all that positive energy and renewal into our neighborhood. Appreciate it. Anything from the Commission? Commissioner?
I just, I know that in McLaughlin neighborhood, they kind of had a neighborhood association-initiated playground project, and kind of in the same vein in NIMs, I, you know, we use a playground with our family all the time, our neighborhood playground, St. Joe's, and I know it's a great gathering place, and I'm really glad that someone took it upon themselves to, you know, it's a, it's a lot of work, and it's not, like you said, it's two and a half years, and I think that there will be a lot of benefit for the kids and the families in NIMs Neighborhood. So, just thanks for doing that, and the city really has played a pretty small part, I would say. It's been thanks to, you know, the work of the Neighborhood Association. So, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? If not, let's move this piece of dirt. Roll call.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renzema-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Come back, Con. Item F, Commissioner Renzema-Savinga.
I move we approve item F. A motion, it doesn't say that we, the staff recommends approval of $20,000 being added to the public relations budget to fund marketing and image-related activities.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Renzema-Savinga, commissioned, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to recommend approval for the $20,000 to be added to the public relations budget to fund marketing and image-related activities. Commissioner Renzema-Savinga?
Yeah, Frank, I was just hoping you could explain this a little bit to the public. And also, I'm just wondering how it fits into our current year budget, and that'd be great.
Sure, so, if you guys can recall back, just a few months ago, it seemed like the idea of approving our image was one of our highest priorities, I would say, as coming out of the goal-setting session. As that goal-setting session kind of, kind of, you know, played out in the media, we were approached by one of our fellow, I guess, business owners over in Revel, and they offered to donate some time to help us develop an image campaign. And over the last few months, they kind of worked on that behind the scenes, and we finally got to a point where they put enough information together where we felt comfortable coming to the Commission and using, and at least requesting some dollars to kind of see that campaign kind of hit the street. So, you know, kind of idea of maybe refreshing our entry signage, doing some things, some different types of advertising throughout the city and outside of the community to kind of help give a fresher image of what Muskegon is today and what we're trying to become over the next, you know, two to three years. So, really, it's just kind of freshening up what we already have now, and it's not that we're trying to portray anything that we aren't, but we want to make sure that people recognize that we are what we are, you know, and there's a lot of good things going on in Muskegon. And we, we've got a lot of great, I guess, feedback from the partners that we've at least solicited upfront to see if they'd be interested in partnering with us, places like the Chamber of Commerce and the Convention and Visits Bureau, to a point where we feel like we're comfortable coming to the Commission and saying we need to put some of our skin in the game so we can get some from these other agencies as well. And it seems like it's been well-received in those agencies, and they're interested in going to their boards and trying to contribute additional funding to really maximize our investment, because they do, they do recognize that as our image improves, things like tourism will improve, things like business opportunities will improve, and overall quality of life will improve. And so, we're just using this as kind of a kickstart to that, to that campaign of, you know, of essentially making Muskegon a better place to live, visit, and work.
And invest.
In fitting into the budget. Yep. As far as fitting in the budget, we, the goal, my goal is, once we get approval from you guys, is we'll present this to you again in the budget reforecast. I'm not sure, we won't have that at the next meeting, but probably at the following meeting. It was just went out to staff here this week, so we're going to be tweaking our, our budgets internally, and we'll bring that to you guys for approval.
Commissioner Hood, as you seconded, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Anything else from the Commissioners?
I answer my questions.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Just to comment, Frank indicated that this is not an effort to try to present us as anything other than what we are, and I just wanted to follow up on that because there are some people in the community who were pushing back against this marketing endeavor and updating of our signs, which are quite outdated in many regards. And for me, it's not about ignoring our negatives whatsoever or trying to masquerade something that we're not. For me, it's really, we have got a lot of positives in our community, and we need to be conveying that to not only our residents, but to people outside of Muskegon, across Michigan, and across the Midwest and the country. For me, it's part and parcel of, you know, really emphasizing, accentuating our positives while continuously striving to eliminate our negatives. So, I'm all for this.
And I like that song from Bing Crosby. He sang that once.
You dig your songs, Steve.
Great. Anything else, Commissioners? Not roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renzema-Sipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Before we move on to new business, I just wanted to make a few remarks regarding incidents that occurred over this past Friday. It's unfortunate that we have an individual that would disrupt the good life of this city and wreak havoc two blocks away from one of the most exciting events in Michigan. And due to that individual's criminal behavior, two victims had to be treated for gunshot wounds, and we send out our best wishes and prayers to those men who were victimized by the behavior of one criminal. Of course, due to the fact that it occurred on an eventful night with a football game going on, there's always questions as to, you know, what do we have in place and what have we implemented? And I can say unequivocally that we, as an organization, with our public safety, our police department, are well-served, and we have maintained and continue to enforce well-laid plans. As far as our law enforcement preparedness, not just for that night, but for any of these type of evenings where we have a massive undertaking, we provide a cooperative police effort for all home games, utilizing area police, sheriff's department officers to assure the game's safety. Now, last Friday, not only was our own department, Muskegon Police Department, engaged, but we had Michigan State Police, the Muskegon County Sheriff's Department, Norton Shores Police Department, and Muskegon Township from their eastern precinct collaborating to provide security services. Now, the goal, as it is with all of our policing within Muskegon, was high-visibility patrols, which we achieved. Police provided multi-phase approached zoning inside the stadium that was considered our hot zone because of the concentration of people, a warm zone, basically one to two to three blocks surrounding the stadium area, and a cold zone, which is the city at large, where we assigned our regular patrol for calls, service, and backup for any incidents throughout the city. Now, our strategies are well-thought-out and well-implemented, including patrols, surveillance units, foot patrols, bicycles, again, always, high visibility and high contact and interaction with our public and our visitors. We used video surveillance inside the stadium, and were able to break up a fight and make immediate arrests and keep that from spilling over into the neighborhoods. Extra lighting was provided and paid for by Muskegon Public Schools to the tune of $1,000 in order to take care of noted dark areas on the campus. When the event was made known to us, an immediate stadium lockdown occurred to reduce further injury, and it was pulled off successfully with full cooperation by our citizens. Now, over the past two months, event plans were put into place and continue to evolve as we take input from our officers on the ground who share the information with our top command. Meetings continue with school administration to go forward and adhere to safe-school initiatives. Now, this week's game has been rescheduled to daylight hours. I believe they're moving it to Saturday, which is functionally more appropriate than dealing with crowd control issues during the dark hours, especially as Halloween also falls on Friday this year, so we can concentrate on safe streets and keeping our, our kids safe. Now, these type of positive events, like our daily life, the good things that we do in the community, need to continue regardless of the acts of individual criminals. You can't stop living because of them. And we cannot have a singular incident deter Muskegon High School from holding important school functions. I continue to have total confidence and a high regard, and I support our regional police function and forward security plans, and it's designed to be visible, recognized, deter and react, and mitigate criminal incidents and crowd, crowd control issues. It can't prevent all incidents from occurring. We'd love to do that. We try our best, police, citizens, neighborhood associations, other engaged individuals. But we'll continue to deter major events from occurring in the presence of police officers, engaged citizens, as we continue to make that presence also visible throughout our city and our neighborhoods. So, thank you very much. And if there's any additional information you'd like to get from the chief, the chief can come up unless you'd like to address with additional input, Chief.
I just want to thank... First of all, Mayor, I appreciate the information you put out there. I think that pretty much explains what we've been doing since the end of August when one of these events first started, the football games. We've treated this just as we prepared so that if any event occurred, we would be ready. And in addition to everything the mayor said, we actually had an assault take place basically about two blocks from the stadium. When all this was going on, our officers responded to that. They mitigated that situation, they investigated it. We interviewed both victims. One victim, we're still working with to seek cooperation from him because we believe he has some information, and at some point, he may come forth with what we're looking for so we can resolve this, this sad situation that involved a handgun at about 9:00 PM last Friday night. And that's about all we have right now. It's still an open case. We're working on it. But since August, we've had two, what I would call, critical incidents. We've had literally thousands of people come to that area and go through that gate. Muskegon football team has had just an impeccable record, and it was a great game on Friday night, which they didn't prevail, but I'm sure that's going to make them stronger for the future games they have. We are fully confident. We're in place this Saturday. We'll be ready to go, and we're going to wish the Muskegon football team good luck and undefeated season the rest of the month of October and November, and hopefully bring home a state championship to us.
Any questions for the chief, gentlemen? Thank you, Chief. We can move on to new business. Commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
I'd like to follow up on an email from our City Manager last week to the City Commission with regard to urban agriculture. As some of you may know, the staff-initiated urban agricultural ordinance amendments were presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission had not taken any action on the matter, one way or the other, recommending for or against, and the City Manager decided that the best way forward was for the City Commission to discuss this at our next work session, December 8th work session, and invite officials from the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Regional Rural Development so that we have state officials providing accurate information and allowing us, Commissioners, an opportunity to pose our questions, to get, get answers, and address some of our concerns. And I personally think that Frank's proposal is a perfectly reasonable way forward for us to advance this, this issue, at least discussion of this issue. It's something that staff has put a fair amount of time in over the past several months, working with the M-DAR, working with community gardeners, working with our state legislators and amongst themselves on this. So, I think it's worthwhile for their effort, to acknowledge their effort, and also the efforts of others in our community on this issue who have, you know, wholeheartedly come out in support of it at last month's Planning Commission meeting and subsequently. So, I would like to hear from my fellow Commissioners on this, this question, if you would also like to accept Frank's proposal in this regard and have this come to our December 8th work session for discussion.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree that having an opportunity to talk about this and...
Yeah, I would agree that, uh, having a opportunity to talk about this and, um, you know, if nothing else, discuss what the planning commission did and did not do, uh, listen to, uh, acceptable third-party sources so that we're all, uh, accepting what we're hearing from a common source, uh, so that if we choose to take some action, at least, uh, we all have the same information and we can make a thoughtful decision. And also, I think we need to understand that, um, the planning commission and the zoning commission and the historic district commission are autonomous under state law for a reason and sometimes, you know, we may not agree with what they do. So I think it's important to understand and maybe have, um, the chair of the planning commission be there to kind of explain, uh, the nature of the debate, the debate over a two-month period, uh, as to why they reached the conclusion they did. So I think that would be a healthy thing for us to do and I certainly would concur that should be on the, uh, uh, whatever we can, as soon as we can, on a future work session agenda.
Commissioners?
I would concur. I would like to see the, and I just want to clarify, is there a work session in November or, okay, because of the election?
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
Our general session was moved up from the 11th to the 10th.
Right, so we'd have to move that into December.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Same with me, I would concur as well. I think it's a great idea to sit down and have, uh, discussion, um, to get answers and, um, get the community also engaged as well.
Yeah, I'm of the same feeling. It gives us an opportunity, you know, as this body to, you know, discuss any, um, you know, concerns within us before it goes to whatever, whatever next step so that we can be on our page, um, and know where each one of us is coming from and where, you know, our concerns, uh, need to be, you know, addressed. So, I concur as well.
Any other new business? If not, we'll open to, uh, public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission? Uh, if so, uh, please come forward to the podium. I need to ask you for your name and address and each individual is given three minutes to address the commission. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how's the house coming along?
Beautiful.
Great.
We're so in love with it. Um, so my name is Deborah Warren and I live at 123 West Larch and I'm here to talk again about urban agriculture. Um, and we've had a lot of people up at the podium and we've talked about food deserts and job creation and educational value, uh, mental and physical health, all associated with urban farms. Um, and we've spent a lot of time talking about the energy and how these movements really bring people together. And many of our local residents that are usually here at these meetings talking about urban agriculture, um, couldn't be here today because they're actually in Lansing right now, um, attending what's called a Good Food Summit. And Michigan Good Food is a statewide initiative to promote policy changes that advance food that is healthy, green, fair, and affordable, which is really what we're trying to do here. So this is a statewide initiative taking place. Other places are having problems and I really think this is an opportunity for us to work together, not only as a community, but as a state, um, to figure out how we can find some solutions. And I know so many of you have been saying, "Well, we're not against urban farms, we're just not sure what's going to happen with this whole right to farm." So whether we utilize this information from the Good Food Summit or just continue to do our research and talk to other cities that are successfully implementing this, um, there's a lot of options for possibilities, um, really so that we can figure out how to get what's grown right here in the city of Muskegon into everybody's kitchen, um, and not just if you can pay cash, because that's been a big, big debate, is, well, you could still pay for it, but we should be able to buy it with cash or EBT, um, or double up food bucks, any of that. So, so that it really can be available to all. So I just encourage that we continue to work together and know that so many people in the community are supportive of this, um, and have come up to this podium to present that because they care so much about it and see how much it's impacting our city. And as a dietitian, growing your own food, when it comes to eating healthy food and staying healthy and preventative health, i- is just huge. So, thank you for all of your time, um, and I look forward to some positive results.
And I feel a bit of pain because I'm going to be eating my last tomato from my, my square foot garden at, at home.
You know, I just spent all day today working with high schoolers canning tomatoes so that they don't have to feel that pain. They can have it in the winter. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, just, just one reminder for people that the Muskegon Farmers Market does accept EBT and does use the double bonus program. Um, so people who want to take advantage of that to extend their food dollar, uh, that's currently available at the, at the Muskegon Farmers Market. Those are excellent programs and it helps people get a better quality of food and stretch their food budget. And I'm pleased to say this is, I believe, our fourth or fifth year that we've, uh, had that available at the Muskegon Farmers Market.
Thank you for the reminder.
Hello, my name is Mitch Anderson. I live at 123 West Larch Avenue in Muskegon.
You know that woman?
Yeah, I do. She's a, she's a keeper. Allowing local farms to sell their produce empowers people and the community as a whole. Muskegon needs to be seen as a forward-thinking city in order to attract more young people to this growing town. Allowing the sale of food grown in the city limits will help this. Furthermore, the sale of locally grown food can also be a wonderful teaching opportunity for Muskegon's youth. They can learn to grow the food in one of our many gorgeous and impeccably maintained gardens and then, in turn, learn point-of-sale skills by selling that produce that they have grown at the local Muskegon Farmers Market. Finally, they will able, be able to turn around and reinvest the money that they have earned into more seeds and equipment for next year's harvest. This is valuable educational experience that Michigan, that Muskegon itself can help bring to fruition. Allowing urban farms to sell in Muskegon would be supporting sustainability at the core of its definition. Allowing urban farms in Muskegon to sell is very important for Muskegon's youth and so please don't forget about that. Thank you.
The, the conversation as well, and I'm sure some debates will continue and we will, we will, we will move forward. Evening, Josh.
Hello. Joshua Elden Grady, 1336 Spring Street. Just wanted to provide a really quick comment on misconceptions that I've heard going around from a couple of people on right to farm and how exactly the issue with the GAMS works. I've heard a couple of comments about if the city allows sales, suddenly none of its rules will be enforceable and, well, there's a whole lot of unknowns, as I'm, I'm sure I know Mr. Schreier and Ms. Landis have talked to you about as far as right to farm. One of the things that is very clear is that in order to prove, of any protection from right to farm, you have to follow all of the generally accepted agricultural management practices or GAMS that the state publishes. And I, after looking at the city's proposal, I went back in and looked over the GAMS again and, and the city has proposed, and I know as I said to the planning commission, I have issues with some of the definitions I wish were written better, but a very reasonable set of rules, about five pages worth of rules that a farmer has to follow. If the farmer wants to claim right to farm protection, this is the GAMS for fertilization, irrigation, pesticide application that they have to follow. And just as, as a quick example, if I grow cabbage in my backyard garden right now under the city rules and under these proposed new rules, I can powder my cabbage every month to help make sure I don't have worms. If I'm following the GAMS, if I'm trying to get right to farm protection, I have to confirm that I have worms before I'm allowed to use a single pesticide. I can't just do it preventatively. Another example, right now, I can fertilize my garden however often I think it needs to in order to grow well, just like I can fertilize my lawn however often, subject to the county ban on phosphorus on lawns. Um, under the GAMS, I have to test the soil and prove I need it before I use any fertilizer at all. And, and in fact, going through, back through the rules in the GAMS and the rules in the city ordinances, I can't find a single place where a GAMP rule is less restrictive, but, so I'm not sure why any farmer would want to choose to follow 100 pages worth of rules instead of following five pages worth of rules. And just as, as a matter of thought, if there's one rule that is less restrictive in the GAMS, and if you know of one, I'd be happy to hear about it because I can't find any. In order to get that one less restrictive rule, they have to follow all of these more restrictive rules. But, so I, I think some of that fear is overblown, but please don't take my word for it. Please, at your work session, get the folks from M-DART here. They're professionals, they know what they're talking about, this is their job. Please, at your work session, see if you can get some of the folks from MSU Extension who specialize in this area. Again, it's their job, they know what they're talking about. You need to hear about how this works from people whose job it is to understand how this works so you have the most complete information and understanding.
We're going to do our homework.
Of this issue. So, please try to get those people to your work session too. Thank you.
Are you going to make kraut?
Make what?
You said you, you have cabbage? In your garden?
Hypothetical, I didn't grow cabbage this year.
Oh, darn. I, I was, I was hoping for some sour kraut.
But, but I'm enjoying those last few tomatoes too. This cold weather, I got a bunch of green ones on the vine and they're going nowhere, so.
Thank you, Josh. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the, uh, commission? If not, I would just like to remind everybody to get out and have a fun day on Tuesday, which is voting day. Get up early, have a big breakfast.
Don't forget about Halloween.
And what?
Halloween, tell them the Halloween hours.
And Halloween night is 31st and Ken, you'll be coming over to take me out with the kids, won't you? Okay, I appreciate that. So, again, uh, very important, watch out for the kiddies on Friday, uh, get to the dentist on Monday. On Tuesday, um, get to your polling station. Um, we still, pardon?
Hi. Friday night.
Friday night is?
Six to eight.
Six to eight. I, I have to be off the street at eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please question.
Very good. If there's nothing else, Commissioner Hood?
I move to adjourn.
Second? It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, wait a minute. Thank you, it's good to see everybody.